This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you for having me. Wes Johnson is here with the community. We're going to talk to you and watch over you. Only while we are, thank you for these speakers on council here tonight. We are heading for the purpose of serving, serving the people of Bonner Springs. Father, we do acknowledge our humans and we ask Jesus to watch over us and you guys respect the way. Thank you for having Wesley in the mess. We ask you to continue your blessing and your citizens. I have one more part.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We have here the president of the United States of America. So I am, uh, my name is, uh, Paul Grant. There is a foundation member, social business community. I forget everyone wearing a mask. And also I get, uh, take care of my, uh, kids. But anyone like standing next to you?
Probably be a good idea. I don't know if it'll reach all the way to podium. Sorry about that.
That's smart.
I said just a little bit more this way so you're not right in front of the camera. Or that way.
They're good? All right. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I have two issues I want to speak about, but they're interconnected. The first is a zoning change at 110th and Riverview Avenue. I believe that that would be a bad decision to make. You guys will hear about it next month. I, I think that that area is better suited for like housing, maybe some other sort of smaller commercial type development rather than a warehouse or five warehouses. The noise and light pollution alone, it would go on 24/7, would be enough to ruin the peacefulness of that area. And I realize that we can't have everything we always want, but usually, you know, if you look outside the house, you want to see other houses, you want to see similar structures, you don't want to see a warehouse. I was down at Edwardville Park last week and I'm walking through there and it's a nice night, but there's the warehouse that's right across the creek and you hear the trucks coming in and you hear the backup noise, you hear all of that beep and banging, the truck shifting and stuff. And I just think there's other areas in our city that would be better suited for that, for the industrial area rather than right there. And this kind of segues into the next problem. And I've emailed and talked to a lot of you on the council of the years about the condition of Riverview Avenue. The road is atrocious. It is terrible. The potholes are so bad. Yesterday I'm driving down and when I kind of check, it's flying up on me. Oh gosh, what did I do? You know, and I'm trying to get, you know, get away from him. He came up on me so fast because I was going 17 miles an hour. I'm not the kind of person, you guys understand, the road is that bad. The city has done some pothole repairs over the years, but you know, not a couple, two or three days of 90 degrees heat and the asphalt comes back up or you take the snow pile process, it comes up. So it really needs to have something done. And that's only going to get worse if you do approve the compass center, which you'll hear about next month, because the traffic volume will increase on Riverview. They're talking about five warehouses, trucks. It's just going to be, it's going to be terrible and that road is not designed for that. So it really needs to be addressed. Now, the thing that I think people don't realize is how busy that road is. With the golf course and disc golf course, one that can park, a lot of people use that road. It's an arterial road. People use it to come into the city. People from northern Edwardville use it to come into Bonner to shop at Walmart, Christ Shop or stuff like that. So I really think it needs to be addressed. And if this new development does come in, they're talking about putting a new road kind of north of that in Edwardville and come across. So I think over the years, people have speculated that maybe they did not want to fix Riverview because they wanted the developer to do it. But if the developer is going to bypass Riverview basically to get into that development, then the city needs to step up and fix the road. So I know you can't do any action tonight, but I just thought I would get that information out to you. And if sometime in the near future, we could have some sort of answer on when, excuse me, we could get some work on that road. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to stand in this room and say no? Saying no, I'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the August 21 city council meeting. Play for city. Play for city operations, play for public government authority operations. Uh, do you think any people by the consent agenda? Or can some comments be helpful? Saying none, I'm going to take them out.
Mayor, the motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Stevens?
Yes.
Kip? Gurley? Wood? Thompson? Mackey? Shannon? Motion passes.
Very good. And you're on to your presentation tonight by the entire public vote.
Well, Chris is getting this set up. Just really quickly, just want to introduce Julianne Van Lu. Julianne is the director of the health department. I've asked her to attend today just to give kind of a quick sort of snippet of information related to the health department in Wyandotte County. Over the last couple of years, we've had, been fortunate to have county folks come and talk about their respective departments. So in the past, we've had the appraiser's office come out, I think that was a couple of years ago, and then the district attorney's office as well. So again, this was probably the most appropriate time, given the circumstances, to kind of go over the health department and then also sort of introduce Julianne and then obviously segue into the impacts that we're seeing with COVID-19 in our community. So with that, I believe Julianne has control of the presentation, so I'll let her kick it off.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? John, can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
One second, Julianne. We've got a little bit of technical difficulty. Julianne, can you give us a test real quick?
Testing.
There you go. All right. It is working quite loudly now. All right. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
Okay. No worries. Please flag me if, if anything goes wrong with the volume. Okay. Good evening, city council members. I'm very happy to be here tonight. Thank you for inviting me to give an update on COVID as well as a little bit of a brief introduction to myself and to the health department. Tonight, I'm going to introduce myself, but also talk about the health department's roles and responsibilities, COVID and non-COVID, as well as talk a little bit about some of the work we do out here and give you a full COVID-19 update for the data for Bonner Springs. So just very quickly, I've been in the role of director with the health department for a little over three months now. It's a role obviously appointed by our county administrator, Mr. Doug Bach. Previously, I was the planning and operations manager in our health department. So I manage strategic planning and all sorts of kind of organizational work around our workforce development and quality improvement. And so moving into the director role, I feel like I have a pretty good handle of where we are and where we need to go. And my vision for the, vision for the health department is to move us in a little bit of a new direction. So I really see us as what we call a health chief strategist. And so it is the role of a health department to not only do immunizations and family planning and some of those really critical key clinical services, but it's also our job to bring the data forward, to be a convener and a collaborator and a coordinator. There's very, very little a health department can achieve on their own without a tremendous amount of partners. And I'm hoping to really move us further in the direction of policy systems and environmental change, what we call PSE change, because we know it's really important to do something like get, get 20 folks in my community hooked up to tobacco cessation services. That's a really big deal. But a bigger way to make an impact is something like T-21, where we reduce smoking hopefully for our younger folks by not allowing it to be sold until they're 21. So really trying to shift a little bit from this really individualized care towards whole populations thinking. That's the, that's the way I'm hoping our health department will continue to move in coming years. Going to do a little bit of brief kind of primer on where we get our authority and what that authority looks like. So within the state of Kansas, as with most other areas, public health is a decentralized power. So there are 100 local health departments, generally one county health department for every county. Our county commissioners serve as our board of health. So these groups of individuals are one in the same. This is not standard practice across the country. In KC Mo, for example, or over in Missouri, boards of health are comprised of individuals with health training. So we have a little bit of a different system here. I do report out to our board of health routinely, both in my previous role and in this one, about COVID, but about also the strategic direction we're moving and how we're functioning as a health department. So I report directly out to them. Our health officer, many of you may have heard recently of Dr. Alan Greiner, who's our health officer, and Dr. Erin Corvo, who's our deputy health officer. They serve at the pleasure of the board of health. So the board has the ability to bring on or dismiss health officers. So again, our local board of health authority comes from Kansas state statute and is reinforced in local unified government ordinance. I'm not going to read all of these slides. I really wanted you to, to be able to see what the state statutes and the local ordinance were. So if you want to follow up on them, that that language is available for there for you. Our local health department authority is, is split. We get it both from state statute for a whole bunch of things like sanitary codes, ability to work on lead-based paint in homes, business trader profession, so nursing profession. We have some powers to oversee those licenses, et cetera. And then we also have powers available to us via the local UG ordinances, so especially around air pollutions, sewers and sewage disposal, swimming pool inspections. And I would make note, these, these are authorities and powers given to us. We do not regulate and fully realize all of these powers. Some of them just administratively happen in other unified government departments or they actually happen at the Kansas state health department. But these are what are given to us via state statute and local ordinance. And then again, as I mentioned, our local health officer is also outlined in state statute. That has to be someone with medical training, someone with an MD who has public health training. So that again is reinforced in local UG ordinance. We just brought on earlier this spring, a deputy health officer. We knew early on in COVID that our, our need for medical advice and expertise basically on a 24/7 basis would, would be heightened. And so we brought on a deputy health officer with intensive training in population-based care and she has been supporting just a tremendous amount of our COVID work. So we're grateful for that. A little bit more for those interested, specific to communicable disease powers, obviously a very important thing right now. So communicable disease control powers reside both within our local board of health as well as within the health officer. So you can see here, the health officer has the majority of these powers, but basic ones around receiving reports on diseases, investigating causes of those diseases. So a lot of you have heard recently about contact tracing. That's where that power of authority comes from, our, the health officer's ability to investigate contagious diseases, take all known measures to prevent spread. So I'm going to highlight that one for you and we'll come back to it in just a minute. He also has the, the authority to require individuals to seek testing or treatment for communicable diseases, as well as to isolate and quarantine those individuals who are a risk to others. And then lastly, I would note, both the board of health and our local health officer have the ability to prohibit public gatherings in the event of, of a pandemic, as we have done in the last several months. Just two quick areas that I'll highlight, and I won't read this all, but just so you all have an idea, obviously when Kansas state statute was written, COVID-19 was not a thing. So it really falls into this category of other acute infectious contagious or communicable diseases and shall use all known measures to prevent the spread of any such infectious, contagious or communicable diseases. So that's kind of the broad-ranging power that you see the health, health officers using right now to implement health orders, to require masks, to do some of those things. Those really fall into this broad category of any measures that would prevent contagious diseases. And then similarly here, you see the specific language about his and her power to require individuals to isolate or quarantine if they are a risk to the community. And they do have the ability to call on law enforcement to support them in this effort. We've only, we've had to do that, I think, two or three times early on in COVID to help people understand that isolation and quarantine are very serious things and that by, by violating those orders, they are out of compliance with the law. And so we've had to use that a couple of times. By and large, people are, are pretty good at adhering to those orders. A few other public health ordinances, you can see here, some of them state, some of them local and some of them mixed, that we have some various powers related to. We do a ton in the environmental health kind of arena and we'll talk about what that looks like in Bonner here in a minute. We enforce HIPAA, obviously. We, we take very seriously the privacy of protected health information. We license all the regulated childcare within the community. We do a lot around tobacco control, as I mentioned. So there's, there's a lot of areas across state statute and local ordinance where a health department just kind of has small powers kind of tucked in among the others and it's really a broad span of control. And just to give you a little bit further understanding of how broad the health department's work is, we have a small staff, but we do a tremendous amount of work out in the community and in our own buildings. So we have a community outreach and education division that, that works on lead, that works on puberty education, a lot of work in the schools. We have a community health division that does a lot with infrastructure, trying to promote trails and physical activity, our childcare licensing that I mentioned, early intervention prevention services. So we have a team of home visitors who, who do targeted home visiting with, with young at-risk mothers who need support and to ensure that their child are developing appropriately. We still do provide those clinical services. We have reduced hours right now, but we continue to provide immunizations, family planning, STI and HIV testing and treatment. So all of those are still available at the health department. Largely, they are based on income and that's generally the criteria for being able to access them, but, but most of our services are available to everyone. We have a communicable disease control division, which did a lot before COVID. So it's pretty rare in 2020 to have multiple tuberculosis cases in a community. We almost always have multiple tuberculosis cases within our community. So that's a big part of their work is administering directly observed therapy to those patients. So they're busy, kind of ongoing with, with many communicable diseases, not just COVID. We have a WIC department that serves about 5,000 clients a month. So those are our children, zero to five, and women who receive benefits related to nutrition and a lot of education goes into that. It's a great program. Our air quality and environmental health inspects a whole bunch of stuff and we'll talk about what that looks like in Bonner. Our planning and operations does all of our community health improvement planning and our community health assessment, as well as managing communications and informatics and strategic planning. So we're also supported by a business office. So we're a robust and diverse department with a lot of divisions just doing really different work out in the community. And then the last thing I'll touch on kind of fundamentally within the health department is just to help you have a little bit of an understanding of, of what we're working with financially. So we do have a health mill levy in Wyandotte County. Our $9.5 million annual budget is comprised of about 3.75 from the health mill levy and 5.75 from grants and fees. And you can see how that plays out in FTEs. And I bring this up just to, to help grow the understanding across our county of the constraints that our health department works in. So the vast majority of that grant money and those grant positions cannot be reallocated. I, I can't do whatever I want with this 9.5 million. I certainly have some discretion, especially with the health mill levy. But, but for the broad, you know, kind of across the board, we receive a tremendous amount of grant funding and we have to operate within those constraints generally imposed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Furthermore, within the last decade or so, we've lost 10 to 12 positions. So the vast majority of local health departments across the country after the recession in 2008, lost between 10 and 20% of their workforce and that has never recovered. And since 1992, we, we have not seen a local health department allocation increase from Topeka. So I, I point these all out just to help you understand that, that the health department was not optimally positioned to, to begin work on a pandemic. We, we've had decreased staffing and decreased funding, like a tremendous amount of, of local government functions have had. And it's really pushed us to have to get very creative, to be very responsible with the resources we have and to figure out how to manage COVID with what we've got. So that's kind of where we are. I wanted to highlight a little bit of the work we do in Bonner. We do quite a bit of work with schools. So we routinely work with school nurses, our epidemiologists work on them, you know, yearly to make sure that they're doing training, to make sure that the nurses know where to report communicable diseases, especially during flu season, but also including COVID. We conduct puberty education in Bonner Elementary. Most years, we do immunization outreach clinics at the back to school enrollment day this year, not so much. We are trying to figure out how to ramp up our immunizations to get out into the community a little bit better because that need is still there despite the changes in school this year. We also do school safety inspections of the actual facilities to ensure that they're safe places for our kiddos to be. We do, I mentioned, a whole bunch of communicable disease control. So any sort of pertussis or salmonella or anything, we would conduct all of those contact tracing and investigations. We obviously do all the COVID-19 investigations and work with places of business and, and the long-term care facility out in Bonner, which we'll circle back to here in a few minutes. We work a little bit on some preparedness with you guys. We do, we have an agreement with the city of Bonner and the school district to be points of dispensing. So this would really, we would tap into this in the event that we would have a public health emergency that has a, an actual medication component. And so for us, I think we will likely tap into these agreements once we get our hands on a COVID vaccine, as we try to get that vaccine out to the entirety of our community as quickly as possible. So I think we'll be relying on those emergency agreements pretty quickly here, hopefully within the next year. And then our environmental health does quite a bit of work out here. Compliance enforcement with, for ambient air pollution, investigations, school or swimming pool permitting, retail food. We do not do restaurant inspections. Those are, happen at the state level, but we do retail and packaged food and we do wastewater, wastewater treatment systems, excuse me. So this is a little bit of a snapshot of some of the ways that I think residents and individuals in Bonner are served by the health department, most often without knowing it. In public health, we are, we are generally seen as doing our job when people don't see or hear from us, because that means things are, things are going okay. Being in the spotlight from COVID is, is a different world for us. So by and large, we work behind the scenes, doing a lot of policy work, doing inspections and, and trying to figure out the best way to build policies and systems that, that strengthen health oftentimes just behind the scenes. So I will transition to the last leg of the presentation here, where I want to focus in on what Bonner has been experiencing in relation to COVID-19. So you can see here kind of the progression over time of number of cases confirmed and diagnosed within Bonner Springs. I'd point out, you can see, you know, by and large, so you've experienced 117 cases. Most weeks, it's just a few case, you can, cases, you can see a couple of real spikes here and those are related directly to Bonner Springs nursing and rehab conducting mass testing for their entire workforce and residents. And I will be doing a quick, quick update on that situation for you, but just so you have an understanding, those big spikes are generally related to, to mass testing there in that facility. Oh shucks, this came out a little blurrier than was on my screen, but I wanted to, to be able to show folks geographically where we're seeing a lot of these cases. I think the nursing and rehab, I think some of you know where that is. That represents a very large number of cases, but you can get a general idea of the spread across your city of where those cases are, are coming up. A couple of interesting things on this slide here. So you can see the confirmed cases by age for Bonner Spring residents. It's really across the board consistent, or there are individuals in every age category. So this looks a little bit different than what we're seeing across the county. There's a little bit more representation of the younger demographic out in Bonner that's seeing cases. The 20 to 29 being kind of the highest age group is similar to what we're seeing across the county. So we've seen kind of an explosion in that age group unfortunately over the last six to eight weeks as individuals in that age group are, are making certain decisions that are putting them at higher risk. So that's certainly not an anomaly for Bonner Springs. We're seeing that everywhere. The other really interesting thing here is the female male breakdown. So kind of across the board for Wyandotte County, we're seeing almost equal cases by sex just across the board. In Bonner here, you can see that it's closer to two-thirds female, one-third male. That's not surprising for a health issue overall. By and large, women are much more proactive in, in seeking diagnoses and seeking care related to their health. It's just a phenomenon that exists across the country for almost all, all health outcomes. We haven't seen it as much in COVID, so I was interested to see it here in Bonner, that, that people who identify as female are seeking out testing more often, which is most likely why they're coming up with higher, higher percent of the population positive. So for me, that means, do we need to do some more targeted messaging to the male population out here to ensure that, that everybody who's needing to get tested is getting tested? I mentioned Bonner Springs nursing and rehab. This is really the only active outbreak that we're currently managing in Bonner Springs. Unfortunately, it's a very large one. We've had 51 cases associated with this particular long-term care facility, 35 of those being residents, 16 staff. It has been an active cluster or outbreak for two months unfortunately, and seven residents have passed away. So we have been working really closely with this facility. Right now, they are conducting with our assistance and in coordination with the state health department, they are conducting mass testing of all residents and staff every other week. And we will not consider this, this investigation closed until we see two full incubation periods without a positive case. And an incubation period for COVID-19 is 14 days. So until we see 28 days or two full testing cycles without a case, we'll consider this to be an active outbreak or cluster. But by and large, we've seen management in this facility respond to us. We've made sure that they have available PPE to them, that they know the protocol, that they're complying with the protocol. We take this very seriously. Long-term care facilities in our community that are not complying and that we don't believe are providing the best care to their residents, we do report them to the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability. We have not had that, that issue with this facility. So, you know, it's an unfortunate situation. They, they do really hard and important work in these long-term care facilities. And so I would note that the most recent round of mass testing only had one or two positives. So we think that this cluster and this outbreak is on its way out, hopefully. Hopefully in the next round of mass testing, we'll get those, no positives and we'll be able to kind of move forward with them out of that outbreak. Want to do just a quick kind of breakdown by race and ethnicity. So you can see on the left side is the race-specific case rate. And what that means is if you had an equal number of all the races represented here in your community, which we know you don't, but if you did, this would be how, kind of the proportion that would come back positive. So you're seeing much higher race-specific case rates for your white population, which is not surprising, because you can see on the, on the right-hand side here, that your white population is getting tested at a higher rate. And that's great. So the populations that are coming back positive, we want to keep pushing them to testing. Interestingly, you're seeing kind of, you know, so 40 cases per 100,000 in your black population and you're seeing a little bit lower here in your testing of your black population. So that would be one area where I would want to make sure we're providing adequate testing for, for that population. Similarly, with ethnicity, so you can see here on the left, your case rates for your Hispanic and your non-Hispanic population are not terribly different. They're a little bit different, but what concerns me on the right-hand side is that our testing rate is much, much higher for non-Hispanic than it is for Hispanic. So even though we're testing fewer Hispanics, we're seeing high, almost as high case rates. So again, that, what that says to me is we need to get the word out to your Hispanic and Latino population and make sure that they have access to testing. And, and certainly, you know, in doing some of this deep diving into the Bonner data over the past week, it's given me some ideas for ways we can think about partnering differently, ways we could think about communicating with one another and with your community in more targeted. in more targeted ways to make sure that Bonner residents are getting what they need. Wanted to do, I just have a few more slides here, but wanted to let you know where folks are getting tested who live in Bonner Springs. So what I pulled here are not every single place anybody's gotten tested. There are some stragglers with 10 or 20 tests or even just down four or five tests. But I pulled all the major locations where Bonner residents are getting tested. You can see here the highest one being through KU, also through Advent Shoney Mission. Those are unsurprising. The Bonner Springs Nursing and Rehab, of course, because they're doing so much repeat testing there, there are a high number of tests that they're conducting. The health department has done a fair number, but certainly not up in the top at all. So there's room for us to improve there, I think. And then we've got Walmart on here, CBS, Overland Park Regional Medical Center. But just wanted you guys to get an idea of where people are going for testing who live in your community. And then lastly, and I'm really annoyed at myself that this is my last slide. This is not the way I'd like to go out. But unfortunately, there have been eight deaths that have happened to Bonner Spring residents. And of course, you'll remember I just mentioned seven of those are attributed to the long-term care facility. So really only one death in your community outside of that facility. And you can see here the age group breakdown of those individuals. And especially since the vast majority of those are linked to long-term care, it's no surprise that this would be our older population. So no deaths in our younger population out in Bonner, which of course is very good. We're starting to see deaths in younger age groups, a lot in their 50s, kind of across the county and several within the last few weeks in their 40s. So I'm glad we're not seeing that happen in Bonner quite yet. We're keeping our eye on that. But overall, eight deaths and let's hope we can keep it there as we move forward. So that is all I have prepared for you this evening. I'm happy to take questions about anything. I'll just open it up to the floor or Sean, if there's a better way to do it, you let me know.
One thing I did notice, if you can unmute Doug on here. Want to make sure. Doug, I noticed you were on there as well. Sorry, I missed you at the beginning. Doug Bach is the county administrator for Unified Government. Doug, did you have anything to add?
No, Sean, I just wanted to be on here in case there was something that you had from a question perspective that was different than Julianne's background to to answer any questions like that. So I appreciate the invite for us to be out here this evening and offer all the facts that she's put in front of you.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. The testing is something that's very important. We're moving to a new level, getting tested across the different groups that need to have a test. Are there plans in Wyandotte County to offer testing more formally across all areas?
So what I heard, I think the question is, is there plans to expand testing across the county? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, given the staff and resources we have in the health department, we can only operate one testing location. And right now that's operating out of our 619 and location in downtown KCK. We are however, within the next three to four weeks, we'll be moving our testing location. Partly because we really need to reopen our full clinical services for our community. And it's really tough to do that with hundreds of cars circling through our parking lot every day. So the location where we're moving has not been entirely nailed down. So I can't tell you that today. We are working very hard to figure out a location that is more central in Wyandotte County so that our population has kind of equal access to it. So that is my hope that within the next three to four weeks, we'll be moving to a location that is accessible for a large part of our county. We know it can't be for everyone, but we're hopeful that it'll be more helpful than we know the downtown KCK location has been for some of our Western residents. I'm sorry, can someone repeat it?
You have a valid saliva testing. Is that?
Oh. Yes, that is our intent. So we've had decreased numbers of folks coming to the health department to get tested. And that's a whole separate conversation that's happening across the metro, but that slowed our validation just a little bit. I'm hopeful by next week we'll be fully validated and then we're trying to work on making sure that we have the right workflow and processes in place. But our intention is to move almost entirely to saliva testing within a few weeks. So long as the validation comes out in really good shape, which so far it's looking like it is. So we hope to move away from that big nasopharyngeal swab and towards the saliva testing really as quickly as we can. We're pushing it. We've got another few days of collection to do, but then hopefully our analysis will be complete shortly.
I think that's a lot.
Yes, we absolutely agree. We think that's one of the reasons people don't come for testing. And so making it as easy as possible is top of our list for sure.
Hi, George Mackey here. I'm curious, between Bonner Springs and Edithville, about 13,000. At 9:00 o'clock, it leaves roughly 5,000 to 10,000 of that towards our city or the city of our area. Do you guys have any major plans of trying to address that? Like downtown city against not anywhere near a viable location for people that are in high over Bonner, St. Louis, Delaware, or Henderson, I think it would be complicated. There's zero or more than 10% of the tasks that we're detecting and we should expect our citizens to leave somewhere near the middle of the county if not have a location specifically in one of the areas that are, I could feel it over there. Is that something you would like for that?
I've got to have somebody repeat that for me. I'm sorry. I can't track it all.
I don't know if you're reading well, but he was asking in lieu of the future testing sites. Are there, is there a possibility to have that centrally located in the county?
Yes. So specific to the pop-up testing is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. So the pop-up testing is difficult because the health department doesn't actually run the pop-up testing. So we partner very closely with Vibrant Health and with Swoop Health who run those pop-up sites. And we participate with them in trying to decide where to locate those sites. And but at the end of the day, that really is their decision. So, you know, we continue to try to push for access across the community. But it's not my staff and it's not my resources. And so I really don't have control over where those end up going. I wish I had a better answer for you than that, but these are federally qualified health centers who are using their resources to conduct this pop-up testing. And so they have to meet, they have to work also within their funding guidelines and criteria that they have as well. And so that limits them to some extent.
Who do we need to talk to? I was at a meeting with Powersland, Portless Seagull, and then Center. Who do we need to reach out to if Bonner is building a high percentage as far as that? And I understand, I know you're giving your, my girl said, I was second thought. We've been in Wyoming for 20, something odd years and you have patients. I'm really tired of that personally. I'm 34 years old and that's why I'm running for office. Once again, I understand you don't, this is the only, this is the only conversation. How can we, who do we need to contact? Saying that it's set with us, it helps. I mean, we have a representative here. First has been your, a part of the night. Who do we need to contact? And how do we get representatives and people help? How do you do?
Sure. I understand your frustration. I would be frustrated too. I mean, the fact of the matter is I can only operate testing in one location with what I have available to me. I'm happy to connect you with the two FQHCs that run the pop-up testing sites directly if you want to have a conversation with them. And I could participate in that or not. Happy to make those connections. It's not an ideal answer. It's just where we are right now.
I understand. I'm just asking for, so I, the first day we listen here, thank you. Yes, it's something.
Your question is what's the turnaround time for our testing right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So we're having good turnaround time right now. Generally speaking, if you get tested today, the health department gets notified usually around midnight or so. So we usually have the results in our email box the following morning. And we've just recently implemented a new system so that positive calls get a phone call that day as they always have. But now negative test results will also get a text message that same day. So previously, if you tested negative, there was generally a delay in hearing back because we obviously prioritize the positive cases. But with our new system, most people will receive a result the next day, at the very least within 48 hours across the board. And we make those calls and texts on the weekends as well. So if you get tested on a Friday, you get notified on the weekend.
Well, that's good to hear. Secondly, I know one of the criteria of certain restrictions on who can be tested. They're so similar for the protection where you're actually. Will that change with, I mean, do you do swine tests? Will it become more ready available to anybody who wants?
I'm sorry to have to keep doing this, but the question was about, we're testing symptomatic folks only and is that criteria going to stay in place?
Right.
Question?
Right. Will you do swine tests? Will the criteria for being tested will be white?
Gotcha. Okay. Yes. So right now you have to either have symptoms, have had them within the last 48 hours or have been a close contact to a known case. And we've kept that pretty tight largely because it's what we can handle and it's the folks that we need to know most quickly are positive. We would like to move into asymptomatic testing, so we are exploring that as well. The hard part with asymptomatic testing is you get a lot of self-selection bias. So you often get the worried well who come forward and they're often from a specific demographic. And it gets really hard to use that information in a positive way. If we open up to all asymptomatic testing, the folks we get, we don't think would give us a representative sample. So we're doing a couple of things. We're trying to figure out how to do some what we call just surveillance testing. So we do an actual randomized sample of asymptomatic folks in the community to help us track the spread. But we are also considering just moving our testing to allow asymptomatic individuals as well. And part of it has been, we've been trying over the last few weeks to get a handle on whether or not the decrease in folks coming for testing is an actual trend or is a blip. And it appears that it's a trend. We're bracing ourselves for some potential, you know, that could come out of school reopening. But my guess, my best guess would be that we will move towards asymptomatic testing here within the next couple of months because there's just so much community spread. We know that it's out there. We know there are folks who are asymptomatic who don't know that they've been, you know, a contact of a positive case who are positive. And so we'd like to get to that space. Again, it'll happen after we move to our new testing location, ideally mid to late September.
Thank you for the question. I don't think that there's any other questions, but one thing that came back on is, do you foresee any additional restrictions at current time? Were mandated to have face masks, public distancing, hand washing, and limiting gathering sites under 45? Do you see any impact on the restriction?
Am I seeing impacts from those on our cases? Is that the question?
Yes. Will those restrictions go up or down?
Oh, absolutely. And I'm glad you asked that. I'm sorry I don't have it ready tonight. Our analysts actually are doing a deep dive into that right now. Pulling together a calendar of every single time we've made or changed an order. And then within three weeks, the result that we're seeing in our cases. So I can tell you absolutely yes. We saw a decrease as a result of our stay-at-home order. Within three weeks of lifting that order and moving into phase three, we saw a drastic increase in cases. And then again, three weeks after the mask order, we saw a pretty significant decline in cases. So both the stay-at-home, the social distancing as well as the mask order, those results are playing out in our data. Absolutely. We're trying to get an analysis put together to share with the public and put up on our hub to kind of explain that a little bit more. But yes, we're looking at that closely and we believe those things are working.
With the reopen of school and the potential increase in cases, do you see additional restrictions? What those might be?
Oh goodness, that's a great question. And I won't speculate partly because our health officers are not here and they really are the driving force behind those. I think it really depends what happens with schools. I think it's hard to know. I think we, truthfully, we're bracing ourselves in the health department. We're very worried about what we're going to find. Where I'm trying to get staffed up, I'm trying to get large amounts of testing supplies ready in the event that we have to kind of mass test full classrooms or full schools. So we don't know what's going to come out of it, but we're preparing for the worst, quite frankly. And in response to that, there may have to be additional changes. I'm not prepared to speak to those yet though, I'm sorry.
Mayor, what if you had to do your rats, if you could draw a little bit longer span of time rather than so selective on particular things? Maybe run a candy, consider candy store, like selected rat crazy and a selected piece of that. Or whatever you got, release that kind of thing to do it in power, if you were, so I can do, please?
Could someone repeat that for me, please?
The rat, you need somebody with the colleagues agreed to do it. Somebody respectfully do it and not selectively. Front pieces off the rat, like I can try to be as professional possible. I'm really getting tired of getting into natural beings because we don't have map or ratting abilities or because of children being elected and wanting to have any science or getting to do for good, positive things. So I'm asking, when the data released, it'd be done since we're selecting it entirely. So we don't get it and have to do for second to. The last thing we have to do is to target a horse to inject a particular section. I'm just asking that all of the definitely will use it once in the event that you do so.
I'm sorry. It's difficult with the technology being the question across. And I'm just going to refer George Mackey to contact the health department to get his own answer. He's quite the answer in a veteran. Veteran. Thank you very much, Ms. Van Leeuwen. We greatly appreciate it. And that the county, all that you've done for us, and we'll see you to work with the health parks again, the best outcome possible for all of Wyandotte County.
Thank you very much for having me. We would love to come back whenever you have us. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne.
We have no, whole business. We'll move on to our business. The first item is quick, it's going to be service project. Oh, we'll go ahead and have a chat.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Matt Beattie, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight, we are basically asking you to accept the 2020 resurfacing project. It was Peter Bowen, that's how he was awarded the contract. Finished up the project back in late June. We surface, walked away 15 streets, paper markings. Stack is renewed and all and effective, it's all passed by. We're author, recommend you. We're author, recommend you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. And I'll give very good thanks to the staff. Because now I'm aware. That's where I mentioned, we got the flash party. I'm happy to be there. I am. Who's the president of third question? So you know. I can tell you that. I have the sun there. A lot of liver. I don't say any of that. Everybody knows this, that the future of the pandemic and all of this was going to be. Because I'm confident that the three on, not only the made it, but also the number. I think that the data did this in the some of those were a lot of. Some of those were, thank you, while we were expecting them. And I feel the difference. Do you grab the rest of the river?
The rest of River View, the eastern portion, the district of Fort Park two. Now, we are working with a contractor this year. Another one, we're meeting with the next year, pre-construction. Part of that project is that we are going to try to address, right now, there's about eight spots. We have funds for about, repair about eight spots. On River View, it's a, it's around Steve, a thousand dollars worth of work. Now, to get down, I've been, I'll push that back up towards the top of our, through the program for next year, the research.
And there's a lot of being out there with folders that had to be replaced. And that was very significant. And so this is another repair along the way. We're doing it after I had it, right, played. And this is what I think, think. Any other questions or comments on this mission? And then, hopefully.
Motion is to accept the twenty twenty resurfacing project as completed by Superior Bowen in the total amount of six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. Kip? Thompson? Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley? Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item number two, approve it. One through twenty-five, with the reserve. That.
All right. Mayor and Council.
During our budget sessions, we went over the capital improvement plan, equipment reserve plan. That's a five-year plan that we asked department heads to submit their request. Right now, there is funding in place for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. We right now don't have the funding in place for the following three years. But hopefully, as our finances get we've always budgeted conservatively, and I think we will have the funding there. But for right now, we know that the items in twenty-one and twenty twenty-two will be able to fund. And I think there's about a half million dollar carryover to twenty twenty-three to help fund what's on there. And that, this is something that we review each year so that not set in stone. That's our five-year plan. But right now, that's that's what the picture looks like in twenty twenty-one for sure is is in place and funded. So we ask you to approve those plans tonight.
Stevens? Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five capital improvement and equipment reserve plan. Second.
Motion is to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five capital improvement and equipment reserve plans. Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley? Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number three, the government's service is going to change order request. Yeah.
I don't need a microphone. Really quickly, this these are a series of change order requests for mostly, they're all for City Hall. They're listed individually, the breakout, all in all, we're looking for a motion to approve change order twenty-five in the amount of a negative or a credit of seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Dirk with SFS is also on the call as well. If there's any specific questions about any of the items, our change order request items, happy to answer any questions.
Do you have anything to add? And Frankie?
I'm sorry. I I really only hear Sean very, very well on his mic. If he could.
Did you have anything to add?
Not unless anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer anything you might might have questions about.
Sweet. Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to continue the twenty-five resurfacing. Now, I'll ask for those that invited. Twenty-five, search the top, and one part here. Eighty-four, ninety-seven, City Hall, at two thousand nine. Is that saying if you are not having that now, that these days, they is two hundred and twenty now?
That is the original change order came, a request came, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. There was some conversation about the actual cost. So KBS went back and tried to reduce where they could. So that actually reduced the total cost by that two hundred and twenty-two. So the original change order request that came to you all a few weeks ago was three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. This, through the savings of two hundred and twenty-two dollars, we're now at two thousand nine hundred. So yeah, the change order was thirty-seven, or thirty-one hundred. It's now twenty-nine hundred. If that makes sense.
I can just through time, it wasn't on the original draft. Can you build a building by building point twelve? Just a building with any, any set or three, three steps, or seven to eleven pieces, required by law. At two hundred, one on each side, one on the left.
Did you hear that, Dirk?
I I could barely hear it.
The just the question was why, were were the handrails originally within the design? And if they were not, why weren't they?
Oh, well, it was a miss. The, that hallway was filled to the brim with haunted house props. So I, I did, you know, I admittedly, we could have moved that stuff around and seen that they weren't there. We just made assumptions that they existed and they they do not. So and and just in general, I guess, on this project, we did, I know everyone's kind of, I can, I can sense the frustration and anxiety with regard to change orders. We were looking at a, another project that we've done recently that's a similar budget for a church. And that project, we're at one hundred and thirty-six change order requests, which is roughly a five percent increase over their bid day costs. And while none of us enjoy that currently Bonner's at one hundred and eighteen change orders with about a seven percent. The other project I'm referring to is a kind of a design build delivery method, and it's a new construction on a greenfield site. So while there's things like the Sally Port, which are are kind of a regrettable change order that occurred, we're we're not, we're kind of in line with what I've seen over the years. And I've worked at three different firms in different locations. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, you can look at it as half empty or half full, but it's, we're we're in line with with what would be considered a good amount of change orders for a project with hazard, hazardous materials. It's existing conditions, historic project on a brownfield site with things that we just couldn't anticipate. So for what it's worth, that that's our take on it. And I, most of the change orders to date, and none of, I might add that zero of change orders to date have been a result of something that got built and needed to be either replaced or redone. We've been, you know, watching all the subs and the general contractor like a hawk out there. And we've been catching things before they become a problem or before something is built and has to be replaced. So I, I do regret every single time there's a, an error or omission on our part. But I I also feel like we've done a pretty good job, and it's it's in line with other projects of similar size and scope. So yeah, that's, that's basically my, my overview of the project to date. And I, I, I share in your frustrations with the amount of change orders. And it's not, not my favorite part of the job for sure. But hopefully, when, when this is all said and done, we'll, we'll still be in that. And I, and I do see the light at the end of the tunnel here as well, that we're kind of coming to a close. And some of the major change orders that are, have been happening are are slowing down. So we're, we're down to the little stuff, and hopefully, you guys can kind of see past a couple of the errors and and see the bigger picture.
I have to go with you, but ten thousand dollars of small error can be three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, and then four thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars on a change order in one of nine, City Hall, for smoke detectors. So if our building burned down, coming detected because we didn't have smoke detectors, which was law, and it doesn't operate, purple building, would you guys just tell people to die in that building? Oops, sorry, we overlooked it. I mean, I need residential instructions, and I couldn't fill my house and say, oops, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't squat on the roof, but I didn't put the signals on. I know that everybody that's in construction put signals on the roof. I mean, I know I'm being harsh, but dude, it's a handrail. It's not, I mean, you said it's been approved before. This is not brand new today. This, this has nothing to do with the stuff. This has nothing to do with the store windows. It's a handrail. In every single jurisdiction in the entire United States, the unified building code of twenty twelve states that more than three steps require a handrail in a residential structure.
I, I understand your frustration. I guess what I'm saying is, the price that you're seeing is exactly what you would see on, if this had been in the drawings and bid. It's not a result of tearing anything out or replacing it. This, this is a betterment. Same with the fire alarms. They would have never been installed in a manner that would not allow the doors to function and close. This is part of the process of construction. I will say that this is the only project I've ever worked on where every single change order, and I, I don't fault Bonner Springs for this, but whether it's a five hundred dollar change order or ten thousand, it has to go through you guys. And it's, we've been extremely adamant about explaining everything and and presenting it in a format for everyone to understand. And we've been honest and straightforward. And while I do appreciate and share in your frustrations, I, these are part of the normal course of construction, and change orders are right in line with other projects of a similar size, if not considerably better because of the nature of the project. So while we're focusing on some errors that maybe we're talking about half of, half of a percent of the, the total change orders to date, I do think overall, this has been an extremely efficient and well-guarded process here. And and yeah, I definitely understand and and sharing your frustration, but that this is just, this is just how construction is.
I appreciate that. I'm just rolling, because that's what you're elected to do. So first of all, I appreciate the thought. Get that done, get it off. I'm just making sure that the decision, no, you read this, overlooked it. Yes, I really, that doesn't like to construct the stuff, so. I guess that's one that's actually, those are the things that, that's maybe, if it is, I need to pull out there.
Dirk, do you want to run through the latest schedule quickly as far as where we're at on the police station and City Hall?
Sure. Off the top of my head, I know the police department is tracking for an October sixteenth, I believe, completion date. Does that sound right? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. And City Hall is January seventh? If I'm not mistaken.
And then just quickly, we haven't approved any change in the contract that specified those dates. But we received requests to modify that contract.
Right. Right. This is something we've been struggling to get KBS to provide. They need to. And I know they're, you know, they're responsible for coming forth with that change order. Everything we've talked about with them to date has not involved, it's involved a time extension and not. We have, I, I don't believe we've approved any sup supplemental or cost for additional days. Every change order that's come through, we've, we've rejected it or asked for an explanation. And when we do, they don't have a good enough one in our minds. So we're, we are, I mean, I can't stress enough how much we've been just going to bat for Bonner on this because we, we don't, we don't like change orders. We don't like incurring additional cost of the project. Nobody looks good in that scenario, not the architect, not the contractor. And and the subs, for sure, have been something that I, if I could sit down with every single one of them and scream at them, I probably would. But that, it's, it doesn't make for a smooth construction process if, when you do that. So we've been very professional this whole time with with everyone. And I, I know that council has been very frustrated with the, the amount of change orders. So we're, we're trying to keep it, you know, stay on the high, high road here and and make sure that no one, you know, walks off a job in frustration or anything like that. So that, that would be way worse than, you know, having these discussions with you guys, I feel. So but we have been stressing the importance of getting that additional days change order. And I, from what I understand, it's not a request for additional money. It's, it's a time extension only. And I, from what I understand, it's not a request for additional money. It's, it's a time extension only.
Well, with different state of affairs, I would expect something to die.
Really, it's. It's the city is the owner. And I've had conversations with KBS. I've had conversations with SFS and KBS. And as Dirk alluded to, we've, we've pointed that out about the timeframe and that we need to have some type of. Paperwork, so to speak, in terms of authorizing that. So we, we continue to press on that. I'm sure it'll be part of our bi-weekly meeting that we have tomorrow to discuss this again. So again, as Dirk alluded to, SFS has been pushing on this. The city's been pushing on this. And, and KBS is working, I would say diligently, trying to get things done on a timeframe. As they've said, it, it doesn't help them at all to be out on the job any longer than, than what they anticipated either. So I can't remember, Dirk, do you remember what the, the date was, the completion date original?
For, for city hall, I believe it was a month after. It's been slipping a little bit since. Early spring, I feel like. But I, I'm pretty sure it was wrapping up at the end of November or early December initially. The big thing they, they messed up in our opinion is putting that, that demolition dumpster right where the addition goes. And so we, we need a better excuse than the dumpster was in the way is, is our opinion on it. So.
More of the change orders.
One second. No, go ahead, Dirk.
Sean, are you able to repeat that question? I can hear, I can hear you. I, I can't hardly hear anyone else. I'm sorry. I, I would like to be there physically too, by the way. I, I, I do miss that. But currently our office is kind of restricting our, our travel outside of cer- certain days in the office. So.
The question, the question just being, in your experience, do you find that the change orders are spread across the, the project in totality? Or is there more of, more changers that come at the end, the middle, or the beginning?
Oh, definitely the beginning on a project like this. And I, I can speak for the amount of structural issues we had with that nineteen eighteen building. I think I've looked at every, with our structural engineer, looked at every stick of lumber in that building. So unfortunately, yeah, a lot of it is on the front end as you're starting to uncover things. And I think we're seeing it start to wind down. A lot of these are just little things too, that we had bigger fish to fry. So we're just now getting the pricing pushed through on them. A lot of them we discovered months ago, just there's too much else going on to, to track all these, you know, little things that have to happen. So definitely we should be at the, at the very end of seeing these change orders. Oh, oh, yeah. This, this chip, this chairlift, this company I've used many times. I do use it more for, so if this lift were, say, in the courtroom, I might. Want to use the original one we spec. But this was a good way to save a significant amount of money on a back-of-house product. But I would say if, if we're comparing it to cars, it's not, the other one was a Rolls Royce and this is more of a Honda. It'll, it gets the same warranty. You know, the same technically sound product. So it's, it's a good lift. It'll, it'll last you many years, especially with, if, if we were something that were used constantly. I, I think you're probably gonna, maybe at, at one point down the road, you'll need to get somebody back up into that touchdown area. Or a council member that is just, is disabled that might need to use it. But for the frequency of use, and it's definitely a durable lift and will serve you well.
Are there LDs on the contract?
Uh, no. And this was something we, we worked with the city on at, at the beginning of, before we sent it out to bid. As a means to sort of control the initial costs of the project. Obviously, there's pros and cons, but the big pro is a lot of times contractors will bury a significant amount of money in their bids just to cover those, those types of arrangements. So.
There, there is, however, performance, surety bonds that are part of the project that also, that would. Certainly have been a similar issue, i.e. as Dirk alluded to, if somebody were to walk off the job. There, there is bonding that is in place that would help alleviate that issue. No, I mean, that's what the LDs are for, you know, are for basically, our liquidated damages are there to help incentivize to get the project done on time. I think the one, one cost that I heard that it, it costs KBS about twenty-five hundred dollars a day just to be on site. So again, it's serving them no purpose to be on site any longer than what they anticipated being on. At least that's the way that they're, they're looking at it. But yeah.
The motion is to approve change order number twenty-five for the Government Services Center project. Gerling? Mackey? Thompson? Wood? Stevens? Shannon? Kip? Motion passes.
Good evening. So real briefly, I want to, I want to talk a little bit of background on the CARES Act. As well as where we're at and what we need to do to receive our share of funds. So in March twenty twenty, federal government passed a hundred and fifty billion dollar appropriation to various local governments, states and tribal governments. And State of Kansas got one point two five billion of that, four hundred million of which they allocated to local city governments or county governments. They allocated it to county governments. And in early July, Wyandotte County put together a subcommittee task force. Which went ahead and looked at a lot of different applications that were submitted by local government entities such as City Bonner Springs. City of Edwardville, the Unified Government, as well as five oh one C three organizations and schools. And they've recommended to the Unified Government or commissioners, certain amounts be allocated to each entity. The City of Bonner Springs received or will potentially receive seven hundred eighty thousand four hundred of the thirty-seven million that was brought to the county. So what we need to do tonight, or what staff is bringing to you, is a resolution. Which just says that we formally accept our seven hundred eighty thousand four hundred dollars. And we plan to use it to supplement or reimburse public safety personnel fine as well as COVID nineteen. So. It's on behalf of myself and the rest of staff, it's a recommendation that we, or that you sign this resolution so that we can receive our funds.
The, the one thing quick, I just want to point out, the, the resolution that's in front of you is the resolution that was prepared by the state. So it is a requirement for the state that we have to, it doesn't necessarily get into the nitty-gritty of, of all of this. It just says that once we receive the funds, we will do with the funds what we are supposed to do with the funds effectively. So this isn't, you know, something that's being pushed by us, onto us necessarily by the county. It's, it is something that is being pushed by the state to do it. But Matt served on the cares committee group after. Several attempts of even being part of the group, so he can probably speak to that.
Certainly. Bit of a loaded question, but our, our cares committee group determined that. There were a lot of different support entities to support the county. The health department was obviously very important. The municipalities were valuable. And then it was determined by the group that five oh one C threes and education should be represented as well. Basically, it was determined that thirty-three percent of the funds be set aside for the health department. From that point, forty-four percent of the funds would go to the municipalities based on their population. So by municipalities, we determine that Bonner Springs qualified, Edwardsville qualified. And the city side of the unified government would qualify as well. And then on, on top of that, we decided to earmark a certain amount for five oh one C threes and schools. Now, the breakdown of that city category was based upon population. And again, that, that left us receiving two point one percent of the overall thirty-seven point three million. What I can tell you is that on the day that we were voting on how to give you up the money. I, I brought forward a different plan. I said that we should lump the unified government departments in the one. And then give the different, you know, the space, we would set aside the five oh one T threes. We determined that we wanted to support that, or that the majority of the group did. And lump the unified governments in the one category, lump Bonner Springs in the one category. And lump Edwardsville in the one category and do those by population. That would have given us roughly one point four million dollars. But in the end. The majority of the group determined that we should stick with the original allocation process. Which again, left us with seven hundred eighty four hundred. So. Yes, sir. Yes, Mike, I have the city manager of Edwardsville.
Bonner?
I want to say fifty-six thousand. Which.
I can say, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that there is a sense of frustration with that amount. Part of the CARES Act was that it was, there were certain allocations that were directly given to schools and given to nonprofits. And, and really this, this pot of money was given directly to the state. Because the only local governments that received money were local governments in excess of five hundred thousand people. There's only two jurisdictions in the state of Kansas that had that, and that was Johnson and Sedgwick counties. So everybody else went into this group that then was allocated by the state. I believe Piper, as an example, received around three hundred and some thousand dollars. And again, that was just a difference of how people were, were. Looking at it ultimately. So.
Oh. I, I know that it was a determination of the county that nonprofits should be supported with these funds as well. Likely because, you know, a lot of them, a lot of them do support making sure families have food, making sure that.
Yeah, the only, the only way that they could, you know, you can't use the money to supplement revenue streams, which you can use it to put in. Or to, for efforts related to mitigating COVID nineteen is, is how it effectively applied to not-for-profits. So yeah, there, I think there is. A little bit of, of difference in, in terms of how everybody looked, you know, there's however many counties, hundred and some counties across the state of Kansas. And I, I don't think that there was a single definitive way on how to allocate this money. They're still asking questions right now about whether or not something is, is applicable. For CARES funding, case, case in point would be, we looked at a health pavilion, Julianne talked about it earlier, about a. Point of distribution for vaccinations. And we thought a wonderful place to do that would be to put a gazebo type of structure up downtown, utilizing that also as a farmer's market. Which is something that is eligible for CARES funding. However, we were told that that can be used for capital expenditures. However, if you look at some of the other jurisdictions requests, they include things like social distancing, trails and things of that nature. So again, I, I, I have struggled with trying to understand it as well. I think the other one that we're trying to also seek some clarity on is the distinguish, distinguishing or delineation of city of Kansas City versus county of Wyandotte. And how each one of those is funded. Right now, I think the, the exhibit that was approved by the. Unified Government Commission included county allocations to the Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department and about, what was it, one point nine million dollars or something like that. So again, we're, we're still kind of grasping at straws as far as what this all means for us. But at the end of the day, Bonner was allocated, the amount they were allocated based off of. A formula that was put together. Again, I think Edwardsville was, was given four hundred thousand dollars, is that right?
Edwardsville got four hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred, which.
I think if you would have just did straight per capita, because that's what it came down to, is they allocated money based on a capital formula. It was about a hundred and ninety-six dollars. Every county got a hundred and ninety-six dollars, give or take. And then they were given an extra couple of dollars to take it to two hundred and.
Two hundred and twenty-six.
Two hundred and twenty-six, if they were a highly impacted community or county. So that was the formula driving it was per capita. So if you just did the simple math of like two twenty-six times eight thousand, it's roughly one point six million dollars. That was given per capita to the county. And I don't think, I'm not sure about not-for-profits, but I don't think there were any from Bonner Springs that were given any money. Is that correct?
I don't think there were.
I mean, ones that were actually in Bonner. I mean, ones that were actually in Bonner, that's not to say there aren't nonprofits that are located within the county that provide services out here, but. Or two or three?
Adding on to that too a bit, um, uh, I will say that the formula that we ended up going with allocated Wyandotte County to have, um, they gave themselves, well, the county provided the county, um, about one-and-a-half million in the formula, and then the UG city side got, um, fifteen-point-two-nine-five billion. And Sean and I were looking at, uh, what the unified government presented for city projects and county projects today to the commission to be approved. Uh, they showed what, about five million from the city, and then about seven-point-four million from the county. And, uh, Sean and I reached out to county representatives on that, and we're still waiting on an answer for what exactly will be funded in the city side of these funds versus the county? Because obviously, there's a big difference between the one-point-four million that was determined in the formula versus the seven-point-four million that the unified government is currently hoping to get from the county fund, so again, going back to what you were saying, in a way, it kind of does seem that they're using some of these county funds to supplement other operations, so.
And, and I'm glad we have representatives here tonight, not to put you on the carpet, but to take back to the county's mission, our concerns, not only, uh, current, but they, as you know, where they've been this way for fifty years, consolidation has been around for twenty years, and, uh, although the city of Kansas, the unified government are consolidated, there's still a county that we deserve and will continue to, uh, uh, stand up for that even if it's the best, the thing that we want the county to be aware of. We, uh, sometimes feel or feel about, uh, recognized, and, and we, for, uh, sometimes, but, um, and we appreciate that, other points, please, uh, with the CARES Act.
Oh. Let me, let me rattle them off, because it might be easier to remember that way, um. Uh, I think nine?
So then, I guess, it's like.
That's not true.
Um, some, or, yeah, it's, we send them to the, uh, dollars. Is that ever a cost?
I would, you know, I think we were told very early on, um, even by the folks in the legislature, um, to be creative with how we were looking at this, this funding, and, and just because, again, there was a timeframe, this has to be expensed by the end of the year. What it really came down to was practicality. A lot of principle in, in why they did this, um, gave, you know, CARES funding, but again, it gets rubber-hits the road, you got to get down to practicality. Um, we have expenses that we listed in there, such as COVID leave, that we provide our employees up to a few weeks of paid, um, sick time in case they need to, um, pay sick time COVID leave. Um, you know, that's a, that's a number that can grow and continues to grow, um, week after week, unfortunately. Um, so I, I don't know. Um, the, the way that we looked at it was that we've, there's a lot of things that we, we certainly need to do, and, and again, you, you can look at some of what the other jurisdictions asked for in terms of what, what they were planning to use the funding for. We've, we've taken the approach, at least this time, um, to just apply it to public safety personnel costs, because that is ineligible, it's been known by the treasuries, given us that information since we, we, well, um, although there was some confusion, and it seems to still be some confusion on that, but again, we, there, there's no shortage of things that we could spend money on to improve, and improve our response.
Um, I honestly, no, um. I would have appreciated if either Commissioner Walters or Commissioner Burrows would have been a part of our team to kind of represent this area of Wyandotte County, but I don't know, honestly, it's tough, because we do have a smaller population of Wyandotte County in this area, so I understand why the majority of the people on the board were UG members, but at the same time, it makes it difficult to vouch for this area, as I, as I hope I did. I hope I supported you all to the best of my ability when there are one, or possibly two, people representing this area and seven representing the rest, so. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, um, the county needed to submit this information to the state by the fifteenth of August, and so they, they went through and listed everybody's kind of expenses that were on there, planned expenses. Um, that needs to go through review by the state to make sure that they're eligible. Um, and then ultimately, then the money gets dispersed, and so we're talking, you know, hopefully by mid-September, we would actually see some amount of money for it. Um, but yeah, there's not any, at this point, what's done is done, um. Yeah.
We have that resolution, we have to, we want to fund, but it does not lock us in if something were to change in the next week or two weeks, and more money was coming our way, even in that, it's sort of this, uh, feeling to be.
Right. I would say that they're pretty much writing the rules as this is happening. Um, they're, they're, they're now into phase two, um, of funding, they're also looking at a phase three. Phase two, um, is, is looking at a lot of different things related to economic development. One thing that, um, I have talked with the county about is the fiber optic, uh, cable system that they have that runs pretty much from downtown KCMO out to the legends, and, and extending that out in this direction. Um, that has a price tag of about, that they're looking at, between us and Edwardsville, to loop that around about three-point-five million dollars. Um, the way that, I guess they're looking at it right now is that each entity that's involved in that is going to have to pony up around seven-hundred-thousand dollars, which is a twenty percent match. Uh, I just bring that up to say that there are other ways that the state is trying to disperse funds, how that's going to impact directly the city, that was phase one, that is what we've gotten through. So any additional, you know, direct entitlement type of things to us is probably not going to happen, unless of course there's some, you know, nobody wants to return money back to the federal government, I guess, wants to be sure. So I have no idea whether or not they, they come back and say, yep, we're going to do another round, but again, the way that the CARES Act was written is that that needs to be put into place substantially, um, by the end of the calendar year. So, you know, my, my optimism, um, sometimes, you know, is just that, calling out, but I don't know how we're going to be able to complete a fiber optic ring around the city and do the trenching or the boring that's involved in that by the end of the year, but you never know. So again, any, anything can change at any point in time.
Oh. Not, not off the top of my head, but I can share that there would likely be a significant number. Um, I can also tell you that there is a significant number of unified government departments that receive more than our entire city. Or technically, the state has to approve it, but if they do, departments from the UG will receive more than our entire city, um. Uh, that's, that's a part of their municipal county request, so, uh, I know there, there were a few items on there that were just head scratching. Um, I think they wanted to spend ten-thousand dollars, a small number, but on a uh, priority-based budgeting, and again, their parks and park department is requesting to be saved two-point-eight million dollars, so that's a lot more than we got, and there's, when you just pull up the list and start looking at all their departments that got more than our city, it's, it's frustrating.
No, theirs was like a pretty substantial amount, was like a filtration system to redo community centers, I think one-point-five million dollars. It's projects, that's, yeah, you couldn't use it for revenue, um, supplementing any revenue. It had to be towards projects or, or prior, or, or, um, projects or future projects meant to mitigate COVID-19. I did pull up the list really quick, I think in total, the 501(c)(3)'s received three-point-seven million dollars. Um, some of the larger ones is going to, are going to be United Way, um, theirs was about one-point-two-four-five million. Um, you know, there's a lot of little ones in here, fifty, twenty, thirty-five, forty. Avenue Life is six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Avenue Life is acting as a fiscal agent for collaborating group of agencies specializing in reaching communities hit hardest Wyandotte County by COVID-19.
Oh, no, they've been around.
They've been around.
Motion is to approve the CARES Act Fund Resolution, Wood? Kip? Mackey? Thompson? Gurley? Shannon? Stevens? Motion passes.
We, we can all thank Sean for that, but I, I wish, at the end of the day, a lot of Wyandotte Countyans are being supported by this money, which wasn't, of course, the goal, but I wish a few more could have been supported right here in Bonner Springs.
Um, just want to point out, I am changing the city manager's report, so you guys have a little bit more to read. Um, but again, this is, um, just a slight change where we're going to go through and actually have um, each department represented within the report to give you guys and the public a little bit more information about the going, goings-on, uh, of city operations. So this is our first, um, you know, attempt at this, so I would, I would anticipate that either some of the departments that didn't maybe put as much as some of the others are going to have more information next time, and some ones that had a lot are going to have less, but the point is that, um, trying to keep everybody, um, more informed um, about what we're, what we are doing. I do just want to point out a couple of things, and this does go to, um, some of the professionalization that we've started to do within our fire department. Um, and this is really attributable to Deputy Chief Jennings, but we were awarded about a sixty-five-thousand-dollar grant. Uh, it does have a small match, three-thousand, but this is, uh, the installation of a capture, exhaust capture system within our base. Um, this is something that, again, um, our firefighters, our, our EMS, our paramedics are exposed to a whole litany of, of, of things. Um, and again, this is just one thing that helps make our, uh, facility that much safer. So again, kudos to him, um, and, and their efforts and working through it, and again, that's a, that's a savings of sixty-thousand dollars to the city to improve, uh, improve our infrastructure. That's all I have, as the lights are turning off. Make sure everything is up and ready. Um, yeah, as many of, yeah, I just want to make sure the, um, cameras are on. The, um, we've been dealing with a, a higher-than-average amount of magnesium within our, uh, within our system. Again, magnesium is an actually occurring mineral that's in our water source. Um, it. It has been elevated since around the beginning of July. And the outcome of that is, is you'll have a brownish-yellowish hue to your water. So again, we did do, after consulting with K D H E and working through those processes, and again, this is a high compliment to some of the professionally, professionalization we've done within our utilities, but pointing directly to Chuck Staples, who's our utility manager. They've been working through taking out different pieces and parts to our aging water treatment, um, facility, drinkable water. We've replaced a large portion of the mixing component, so that the area where we actually put in some of the mixing agents to clean the water and then put it through. We've also, as of Tuesday, that was Monday, and then Tuesday, we've gone through and replaced a pipe, pretty significant eight-inch pipe that goes main feed into our system that had about a four-inch opening to it just because of the amount of sediment that had been able to accumulate. Again, this is the raw water coming in to be cleaned. So again, all of those things combined, we're hopeful that that addresses the issues. Right now, we are working on, we did put our water tanks up to full volume last week, uh, before we started this on Monday in case we did have any issues. So again, over the next week or two, um, those, those issues with that kind of yellowish-hued water should hopefully be mitigated. But again, I think this gets back to our, our conversation that we've been having for a couple of years now, uh, which is that we need to be looking at our water plant. You know, with your guys' direction, uh, that's exactly what we're doing. Frank, our Public Works Director, has put together some preliminary documents that we're going to be talking about internally, about getting an owner's representative. All that term from our previous conversation at last council meeting about design, build. We do have to bring somebody on to help us facilitate that process. And then lastly, I, I will note that we did, um, bring on Black and Beach to help us with some of the loan documents that need to be, um, put together for funding of the water plant. So this is the WIFA and the, the, um, the state revolving funds, uh, as, as far as actually financing the construction of any water plant. But again, that's, right now, we're, we're trying to patch and, and keep things moving as best as we can. And I think we're doing a excellent job of that, given the circumstances. However, the long-term solution is still just that, the solution needs to be, um, you know, looking at alternative water, uh, facility, water treatment.
Do you count for Iden? Are we still recording?
Yep.
I went to recognize Representative Burrows and Commissioner Burrows have been here. I've been here since twenty eighteen, and I believe this is the first time I've been here, so I could be a part of that.
On which side of Pratt's here? Okay, yeah, okay. At this point, yeah, there's, um, there is interest there, though.
We're good. I have had to be that. Received several compliments on, he happened, there is a way to be, uh, being that they did, and how, how well done with it.